Good evening, we are so grateful for everything that you do. And for this time of year, Lord, in the time of birth of your son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Oh, Lord, we hope that you will lead us to make good decisions, Lord, in accordance with your will, that we do like you, and praise you precious name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your Texas flag, pledge allegiance to me Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And first thing, item number five on our agenda is citizens' communications. Do you have any votes?
No, sir.
None to not vote, okay. All right, so we move on to public hearings. Item number five is to conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner slash agent to replant property situated in City of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as a replant of all the College Edition lot 14 lots 5 and S/2 and 4, lots 6 through 8, being 0.62 acres out of the James McKinney survey, abstract 770, approximately located at the northeast corner of Texanist Street and W8 and Drive. More commonly known as 524 North Dallas Avenue and 240 Texanist Street. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this issue? What they've done here is join three lots into one? That's just, maybe that's what they're doing. Two lots into one, okay, sorry. So is there any discussion, any questions or discussion about this item? I see no hands. Second call for any questions, any comments? I see no hands again. A third and last call for any questions or comments? I see now, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number six, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of ordinance in November 29, 2016, special call meeting. Item number seven, consider and take any action necessary regarding the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement for the sale of 29,656,250 gallons of minimum take-or-pay water capacity in the amount of $41,518.75 to the City of Melissa. Item number seven, consider and take any action necessary regarding the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement for the sale of, well, this, you know, earlier I said 29,000. The amount on both of these items, item seven and eight, the amount of water is 29,656,250 gallons of water, minimum take-or-pay water capacity in the amount of $41,518.75 to the City. Item number nine, consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement for $277,060.60 with Grayson County to perform proposed 2017 street repairs. And item number 10, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of change order number one to the Van Alstine wastewater collection and treatment efficiency improvement project in parentheses, TWDB project number 73686, reducing the contract in the amount of $153,731.50 and accepting the contract with In Situform Technologies LLC, as complete. Item number 11, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of change order number three to the Van Alstine water supply expansion project in parentheses, TWDB project number 62638, reducing the contract in the amount of $5,663.75 and authorizing the neighbor to sign a reservation, accepting the contract with Seekon Services Incorporated, as complete. Item number 12, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of the 2016 certified tax rule of ordinance. Item number 13, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of ordinance adopting the 2015 International Residential Building Fire Humming Mechanical Fuel Gas and Energy Conservation Code and adopting the 2014 National Electric Code with NCT COG recommended regional amendments to the codes and repealing the City of Van Alstine, Texas Court of Ordinance Section 8B-27. Now, on these, what happened with Melissa and Anna, it's something that happens. We're in a partnership, Melissa, Anna, and Howe, regarding the water use. And they went over the amount that they paid for their take-or-pay. And when that happens, then the other cities, sister cities get to sell them the water in the next session. See what happens when they happen there. And that's for Melissa and Anna. And as you might have been able to, we saved some money on our wastewater collection and treatment efficiency project. We saved $153,731.50.60 at the close of the contract. And regarding the water supply expansion project, we saved $5,663.75. And regarding item number 13, adopting the 2015 international codes for residential building, fire, plumbing, and canyons, these are things that are required by us, I mean, not by us, they're put upon us by the state. It's an international code, so everyone has to adopt it. And so those are the consent items. Are there any that should not be mailed and consented to?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend that you only need 13% additional revisions that we need to make to the action items and to the second.
Okay, is there any objections removing item 13 from the consent? I see no hands. And so as to items six through 12 on this agenda, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion, a team, and a second. Do we have a second on your favor? Are items six through 12, all right, two amendments? And so we should go back to 13, man, or are we prepared to move into the discussion of the judicial?
Yes, I'm just gonna revise the action item and bring that through. And you can just, you can read it.
All right. You sure I didn't just mess up when I was reading this time? Considering, our number 13 should be, or it's been amended to be, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of ordinance adopting the 2015 International Residential Building Fire Humming Mechanical Fuel Gas and Energy Conservation Codes and adopting the 2014 National Electric Code with NCT COG recommended regional amendments, local amendments and municipal council revisions to the codes and repealing the City of Van Alstine, Texas Court of Ordinance's 8-27. So, all right, as to item number 14, are there any questions or comments? There it stands, it's two, we got the three, four. There's a lot of them. Is there a motion to adopt this?
Motion to adopt and revise.
Yes, revise, thank you. Is there a second? We have a second all in favor. Is number 13 is adopted. Now, on to, to continue then with the regular agenda. Item number 14, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner slash agent to replant property situated in City of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as a replant of all the College Edition lot 14 lots 5 and S/2 and 4 and lots 6 through 8, being 0.62 acres out of the James McKinney survey, abstract 770, approximately located at the northeast corner of Texanist Street and W8 and Drive. More commonly known as 524 North Dallas and 240 Texanist Street. Consider the discussion or any questions on this, or is there a presentation?
Mayor, one question that came up in discussions, working with council, was what was the plan for the property process? And looking at, there's no limit to the number of accessory structures that you have in property. And with current zoning, you push out to personal question, urgent need of office, and that's exactly what we're facing. This is the amount, where you're looking to do a small shop with 220% of the property system. Initially wanting to have accessory structure, but with the deal along, you do not add a primary structure on it. The accessory structure, the office, so that's the reason behind emergency need of office.
And that's something, does that still have to be used, all were considered to be nice to be used?
Yes, sir. So, building itself, but there's, could have made the setback.
Does this require a team?
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments regarding item 14?
Is this the one? Just for clarification on the, I was looking for some coordinates because I say we have this information, or the square foot, I guess it's going to be 30 square feet. The solid works is that we have a threshold of 200 feet as far as, this is something I've raised over, so I'm, maybe providing clarification. At 200 square feet, is there a different requirement as far as the building material of that building versus, it's not going to be the same building, no?
It's SF2, but once the structure is 200 or more square feet, the masonry then has to be complementary to the main structure. I'm not positive if the house has any masonry on it now, but there's no masonry requirement in that zoning classification.
So, a hardwood wood cycle house, that'd be complimentary to it. Absolutely. Any other questions? So, complimentary being siding or, who would prefer siding, please? I guess another question about the 12 by 16, if we figure the square feet, there's a separate part, the solid there about hardwoods, somebody having to, how would that factor in that square feet? As far as the walls, we, so it's the load structure?
Yeah, it's the load structure.
Any more questions? Consider the, could this be? Are you making a motion?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Blake makes a motion. Is there a second? We have a second all in favor. We have four votes for all of those votes. One vote, four votes in favor and one vote, so a motion, okay. Item number 15, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request for the parks and respatition to work with the city engineer regarding the park master planning right, regarding the park master planning right, and park onranger planning right, as required by the court of ordinances. Any questions or comments from this side?
I'd like to comment on that. I'm looking to stay from this particular item, this as a, on the parks board, has to do with potential financial conflict, I would say. But just to add, some comments in the conversation, what we're looking at trying to do is, in the ordinance is, it asks us to come up with an onranger's plan. And so whether or not we all feel like this is the right time to do that, it's something that we're looking to put forward, move forward with the parks program as many of the authorities as possible. So, this is, I think.
Mayor, council. This request is made by the president of the parks board. This wasn't brought before y'all during budget, hasn't been budgeted before. Just included engineering discussion, it's pretty true. We have a parks planner involved in the process as well. Recommendation from staff is to postpone this until we have the funds to have a budget for engineering being involved as well as parks.
So regarding item number 15, are there any other questions or comments?
I was gonna make, have a question regarding this one, that's a, that's a, that's a.
Do we have an idea of course, for the fiscal year, anticipate the end date, and just doing the law and planning, please?
I don't, I mean, we have, we have a proposal, hopefully we'll ask council as you go, to look at the 20-year plan, which parks are part of. As far as us getting together with just a parks planner, I don't have any idea what that'll cost, going to design, or any type of planning, just initial planning, like we're done with February from this, so, that's for now.
Well, we'll probably be discussing this again, Lord, well, next time we get to the budget, but I notice in the agenda item four, it says the first phase of this master parks plan is to do assessment survey. Soon we're doing efforts that we're, we're making to do better, considering the city buildings. And it's gonna, it's one of the mandatory parks, current schedule of field usage, rejected use of fields slash leaves, bike trail plan with schematic complete and future desire of many uses, such as disc golf, playgrounds, courts, et cetera. I see two figures on here, two monetary figures, to say if the hiring of parks consultant can be deferred, can be deferred, until the next budget, engineers complete the initial task in about 40 hours for approximately $9,000. These are the estimates of the president, you are, with his questions. And there's another sentence here, to get a parks consultant on board, the city can anticipate approximately $30,000 to assemble the master plan along with schematics for the future parks and units. So, I would, anyway.
I would like to, I mean, I've been looking forward to seeing something like this be begun. I know we've been, I know we've, but I know we're, the increase in housing development starting, I know we're gonna eventually be behind in this. So, it is something that probably needs to be struck and moved to the front burner as we start preparing for, because, you know, we're definitely low on parks, parks for the current population. And with the quick moving of homes coming in, I think it's definitely something we need to start moving towards, just to get a plan.
If your life means this, this is for CDC and CDC, and so the company is prepared to, trying to get something worked out, get a handle on this, and a lot of, 30,000, just working in engineering about parks planner, I'm sure, so.
And so, if there's any further discussion, is there a motion to deny the expectation at this time, and see what Frank gets from the conversation with CDC, and/or wait until we can make this part of the project? That's the motion, is it done, or tell you? Well, what's the motion, tell you? Okay, well, there's a motion, okay. One second, all in favor? We have one extension, we have four votes in favor of taking this side. That means it will be brought back, doesn't it?
Yes, sir. How many questions?
All right, well, that is all the items on the agenda. We're moving on now to our departmental reports.
Jody, would you like to go first?
Mayor, council, good evening. We're busy in our EDC office, and I had the privilege of attending the TPC tax workshop last week. I was re-certified in the other meetings and public information act. We've got signs out on our property that we don't have in industrial parks, so decided to cut that down. Work is on the entryway sign for industrial parks, so hopefully for the board meeting, hopefully the board can come to an agreement on what we want the sign to look like, and make it more, and that. And I've been working with our allies, I've either talked with or met with Dallas Regional Chamber, Encore, and I've got a representative in front of the governor's deputy office coming to the office. Okay, well, they've been looking forward to give some things to me. Thank you.
Hi, Jody.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, as a member, we had a slightly over 15 years patients come through the door. Actually, over slightly over 15 years, I had circulate with 20 new patients. We hosted a total of six children's programs, with 78 children, 41 adults, respectively. Team pub meetings, we had five, with 36 young adult programs. We had two with 12 adults, excuse me, 12 teens and seniors. On Monday, November 21st, we had volunteers from the Grayson Crisis Center, who did the special Thanksgiving story time, will be returning in December for a Christmas story time. We have the new items in the library, and I'd like to thank the people, again, for transporting vehicles and showing me, helping unload all of our foodies. So, we invite everybody to the library, you see our new room, and our historic bins, and our restored racks, and I just, that was a pleasure to attend to, thank you for your help with that. And a reminder that the library will be closed for Christmas holidays, this is a wonderful experience.
Steve?
I'm the mayor, I'm the council. The city crews, in contract with major repairmen, the sewer system, it had reduced the non-organic loading on the wastewater plant a bit, 6% to 40%. It also reduced the peak flows at high range, which probably took place in the city in my time at TCC. But the port crew have been working today on repairing the major water leak in Arizona and Clinton. The crews have replaced the leaking part in the system, and will resume tomorrow, finish up following the place fire hydrant, restore the owner's property, where we damaged it, and cleaned up and repaired it. The city water system had issued a press notice for voluntary water restriction at this time, because of lower elevations of elevated tank, and at this present time, that has been lifted. Now, the crews of the system is working with lithium, a 6 and 8 inch water main on that job site, allowing for a larger diameter drain pipe to be installed. We still have to come back, there's another line, I've got the valve again. The crews are changing out two valves on the well 6 storage tanks. This is to allow the city to receive CTMA water. This will also reduce the pumping locks, pumping loads on the city groundwater, the wells. Crews installed locking devices on fire hydrants on County Line and Cartwright Road, this is for preventing possible water fail. Fire department has keys and fits a version of the use of the fire hydrant. If you be contractor, we'll be starting sometime next week, and try to get finished with that through the briefings.
Thanks, Steve. Robert Catherine?
Mayor, council. For the month of November, we ran 72 911 medical calls. We had 29 non-emergency transfers, for a total of 101 medical calls. We had 24 fire calls, one hazmat, and one fire inspection. We're continuing to work with grants, there should be work starting next week for the exhaust evacuation, along with the air cleaner we've been getting. Also, continuing work with the medical building company, trying to get that to support for this, we can't.
Two points.
Mayor and council, police department had 45 training hours this month. We had 19 incidents, 342 calls for service. We did receive our radios for the grant that we applied for, which, the lifesaver, as you know, the fortunate incident occurred there, golf course, a couple weeks ago. Without the radios, we wouldn't have been able to communicate with Collin County to assist them, so it's a great additional safety and a tool that you needed. Communication, they had 28 hours, entered 62 91 calls. Calls for service was 1,245, in total, non-emergency calls received was 1,051. Municipal court has been working to complete, be gone paperless, they've been working hard almost to that point. Total cases closed was 80, and the open records request, and court request was 33.
For the month of November, the administrative department entered 1,214 calls in the 20 operating days, and responded to eight requests for public records. We issued three commercial permits for mechanical, electrical signs or demolition. We accepted four certificate of occupancy permit applications, and two residential permits for miscellaneous structural changes, for a total of 10 permits. We accepted and entered 31 new utility account applications, two utility account transfers, and 10 utility account disconnections. Processed 42 purchase orders, and issued 43 general fund checks, 27 water fund checks, two interest and sinking fund checks, one S and an enterprises fund check, for a total of 73 checks. And the planning of zoning commissions meeting, that is regularly the third Wednesday of each month, which would be December 21st, I believe, has been rescheduled to January 4th, so we're providing notices based on that meeting date. And also just a reminder that City Hall, excuse me, will be closed on Friday, December twenty-third, as well as Monday, December twenty-sixth, and Monday, January seventh.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone involved in the Christmas parade, and then the boys had barbecue afterwards, the Christmas parade, and the celebration parade. We know a lot of people were involved, both city administration, and then the fire department, police department, and all the people in the center of the schools, the school was involved, because we did have, had a school band, it was a, it was a great event. Well attended, the barbecue came off well, like it always did. I think the whole, we kept a few people away, but still there was a good atmosphere. And so, I think the Boy Scouts made lots more, and I want to thank everybody who attended and everybody who participated.
Well, Mayor and council, I also want to talk about the Christmas parade. Mayor did an outstanding job, dressed up to the nines, I guess. Baird the gold, offered him a ride twice, trying to get him from, keep him from walking the whole deal like a man in the Boy Scouts, because he was gonna do wingtips, but boy was sharp, did an outstanding job. I also want to mention, besides police and fire doing a great job in the parade, public works stepped up, and the library utilized their trailer, for the library to have a flow to the parade as well. Appreciate everybody that did come out, it did seem like a lower turnout than in the past, but it was still a good time, and I appreciate the other entities that came to participate, and our sheriff, Tom Walker, came down to be, be part of the...
Back to blue, grand marshal.
Grand marshal. Picture perfect Christmas, back to blue. Also, last week, I saw the caterpillar sign leaving town on the back of trailer. We had gotten a pool station alarm that the fire department responded to out of the facility. The alarm company didn't let us know that it didn't work, didn't let dispatch know. Came back, and the guys had told us there are only a few crates left in the building. Today, it was confirmed, caterpillar's given notice that they're gonna be out by the thirty-first, and the building will be, hopefully, ready to go for new units. Jody's already made contact, we're gonna be getting flyers to start marketing that property, and hopefully we'll have a tenant ID on the first tour. Other than that, unless you have any questions, that's, that's all I have for, just like show up at the twenty-second meeting. Everybody good?
Congratulations, Mayor.
Have a merry Christmas.
Okay, well, at this time, time in, seven oh four P M, I'm going to, to recess, the regular city council meeting, and I expect, are we gonna have an, oh, we have to, yes, we have, as I said, let me read that. Before I recess, let me read this. Executive session, in accordance with chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Governor's Code, open meeting back in the current session. The city council, in the meeting, enclosed executive session pursuant to chapter four laws. Item number nineteen, all items below the executive session, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Governor's Code annotated subchapter five fifty-one, the council will enter into executive session to discuss the following items. A, section five five one dot zero seven, in parentheses, consultation with attorney, regarding, small i, in parentheses, invoice received from Adam O'Grady. And with that, then, that, to further instructions. I suppose, no, there's nothing more here. And, so, at seven oh five P M, I'm going to recess, the regular city council meeting, and I expect to convene the executive session at seven... Oh, I, let me find out. Okay, we adjourned the closed session, the executive session, at seven thirty-three P M, and now I'm going to reconvene the regular city council meeting, and the time is seven fifty-four. And we have, there's no actions for us to take at this, at this point, and so, are there any objections to returning the city council meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to return. Check your vote on it, step in. All in favor? One abstaining. All in favor? Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and council.